Reporting to progress.
All right, we're going to call the meeting in order. Please rise up, please, allegiance.
My delight is to the flag of the United States of America. And the liberty and all for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I want to remind everyone that the meeting is recorded and will be posted on YouTube within the next few days. And I also want to take a moment to congratulate Laura Obensky for winning her election. And she'll be the next supervisor coming on in January. So congratulations, Laura. Also take the opportunity to thank Doug for stepping in over the last few months after Kim resigned. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was good to have you back.
What an opportunity.
All right, now that all due to the acceptance of the minutes of the October 11th Wednesday of our meeting. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next to the reports, please, chief.
Thank you. Good evening. For the month of October 2021, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,057 entries in the police department hall recording system. During the reporting period, the officers issued 72 traffic citations, they've estimated 43 motor vehicle crashes, and they arrested 13 individuals. Additionally, for the month of October, the department members conducted one motor carrier detail at the waystation, resulting in 366 commercial vehicles being hit, none of which was found to be overweight. Seven inspections were also performed, violations were reported as a result of one truck was placed out of service. During the reporting period, the traffic officers performed three additional inspections during the normal workdays, resulting in several violations, including one driver having his license revoked. All the inspections were a result of trucks being stopped there after they were observed on a restricted roadway within Euclid Township. Year to date, the officers have documented 10,426 entries in our hall recording system. They've arrested 140 individuals, they've issued 1,387 traffic citations, 213 warnings, and they have estimated 279 motor vehicle crashes. At the waystation, they have made 6,414 commercial motor vehicles.
Okay. Judges report.
Good evening. Through the month of October, we have applied this over 94% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under 86% of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay. Public works.
Thanks. For the month of October, the daily hours of the Down income treatment plant was approximately 1.4 million gallons per day. And there were no new connections made either DOW or the Eagle View Treatment Plant. For the month of October, the township received 4.12 inches of rain, the normal rain 3.2. At this point, a year where it had 9.36 inches above average. The department was out before we ran an event that we had, cleaning our problem catch base scenarios as well as clearing the inlets. And also, going back to Tropical Depression Ida in September, the department completed repairs at bridges along down Ward Road near Kinston and Tilman. And also repaired two spillways at Martin Farm Park. They were out repairing failed blacktop on Harshell and on Pine Creek, as well as repairing St. Cole's Home Brook and Chasing Repair at Lumbergher's in Fairfax. The department did assist with the building of the new grading gardens area behind the kindergarten on Village Jazz and responded to 134 PA1 calls.
Thank you. Fire marshal.
Good evening. For the month of October, the department issued 91 permits with construction activities. Total of 116 inspections were conducted, 30 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to 13 incidents for working hours as well as two open burning incidents.
Thank you. And fire company.
Okay. For the month of October, the Lionel Fire Company responded to 39 incidents. There were 22 in Euclid, eight in Upper Euclid, two in West Whiteland, and seven in other municipalities.
And the Euclid ambulance.
Euclid ambulance. The month of October, we had 418 calls, 43% were in West Whiteland, 31% in Euclid Township. Year to date for this year, we're at 3,536. All of last year, we did 3663, or 100 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any motion to accept the reports?
So move. Second.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to Terry. Have you gotten any kind of a municipal contribution from our friends to the Southwest Whiteland? You know? Have they included you in their budget? Yes.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not all in favor? All right, motion passes. Move to the presentation of the 2022 draft budget.
Thank you, Chair, for some more. Basically, what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to start with going over the process for the budget. And what we're doing this evening is we're going to go over a pretty high level, look at the numbers and the budget as proposed for 2022. Once this, once this is completed, the township will be, it just sounds much more dramatic with the ring. We will be moving forward with the advertisement of the budget, which will be available on the township website as well as on the township building lobby. One of the things that we're excited to talk about this evening is, you know, last year we incorporated a lot of new technology into the process, which kind of really solidified department heads and staff's involvement across different departments. This year, we're building on that by incorporating a new software called ClearGov, which is a platform that not only brings the budget document together in a very user-friendly, reader-friendly document, but it also creates a web-based platform that's interactive for residents to take a look at different funds and go through the budget as proposed. So just recapping that, what we're going to be asking for this evening is permission to advertise the budget and to give a preliminary approval. Formal approval of the budget will occur at the December 14th Board of Supervisors meeting. So one of the very interesting things that ClearGov brings to this package is it incorporates new demographic data to the budget document. And one of the things I wanted to take a look at first here goes, the population of Euclid Township has grown over the years. As you can see, between 2009 and 2010, it's been a little dip, but overall, there's been a consistent increase in population. ClearGov is still working with 2019 census data that's slowly being rolled out as of speed. But we do know that Euclid's population has continued to increase since 2022 at 19,161. With that same census data, the daytime population, which is, represents people who work in the township, visit the township, shop in the township, is estimated to be around 21,402. This number is from the 2010 census, which obviously is older at this point. We do expect that data to become more available and incorporated into ClearGov as time moves on. But if you look at our population by age group, I mean, we're pretty much looking at the largest demographic being between the ages of 25 and 54. Looking at housing, the median housing value for Euclid Township was at 396,600. Going back through 2014, that's been a consistent rise that I would anticipate to see continue as time moves forward. The main distribution of home values really ranges between 300,000 and 500,000. When we look at the percentages of those who own versus rent, Euclid Township is looking at about 23% of those residents rent compared to the 31% statewide average. And 77% home compared to the 69% state of the house.
Can I interrupt or do you want me to wait for me? Just a question on how that's, how that's calculated. Is that based on home sales and then extrapolated to the neighborhoods or?
I would assume it's based off of home sales and the transfer data that the township gets. We'd have to look into how they pull that together.
Yeah, I came from the program.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they're using the projected census data, but once the 2020 data comes out, that'll be much more fun. When we start talking about property taxes, the first thing I want to say is the 2022 budget does not propose tax increases for Euclid Township residents. As you can see on the chart here, this goes back through 2006. The yellow color here is the school district taxes, the red is county taxes, and the blue is Euclid Township. As you can see, the slister taxes, you know, increased from year to year as well as the county tax in certain years. The township's tax rate has not increased from .12, well Doug, you would know, probably over 30 years. So we're happy to say that it will continue into 2022. To kind of give everybody a better idea of what we're talking about when talking about a tax bill, we've broken it up based on an average assessment of 220,000. As you can see, the Down County or Slister district tax comes in at about 84.5% of the total tax bill, or about $5,600. The county tax rate comes in at about 15% of the total bill, or about $1,000, and Euclid Township comes in at .39% at $26. Before we get into the meat of the funds, I did want to talk about just the general structure of our funds. We have the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the township, and pretty much accounts for all transactions outside of the funds you see listed below. The hydrant fund, this fund collects a portion of the real estate tax and assesses homeowners who have acquired hydrants of in 600 feet of their property. This helps pay for the standby fee to Aqua charges for hydrant, which we'll get into even a little bit. The sewer fund prefers solving sewer, sewer rental, tap and fees, operation costs, maintenance costs. The capital improvement fund, it's financed through expenditures from the general fund. This is where we get most of our capital projects financed through, purchased through, including things like vehicles and building improvements. And finally, the state liquid fuel fund, this is a fund that we receive funds through PENDOT and is restricted and used for road maintenance and road maintenance projects. This is a big paragraph, and I apologize because it's taking up much of the screen, but what I wanted to do is just to go look at projected revenues function for 2022. And as you can see, just as in previous years, the earned income taxes amounting for a majority of our revenues for 2022. The green here represents all taxes, and in a second, we'll jump over to the number sheet, but the earned income tax is a majority of that number. Followed by the collection costs at 17.5%, permits and licenses at 11%, and then so on and so forth. When we actually look at the numbers here, you can see for revenues for 2022, the Act 511 tax, earned income tax, comes in at 6.875 million. Followed by the charge for services and fees such as collection and trash. And then various other revenues. For a total revenue of the general fund, projected for 2022 at $11,578,900. When we turn our attention to expenditures, public safety announced for a good amount of total expenditures for 2022. Followed by trash and recycling, which we will get into in a little bit, but the costs associated with trash collection continues to rise year after year. Followed by public works, the highways and streets maintenance, 9.9% administration, parks, and then other miscellaneous items. When we look at the numbers here, you can see that the police department announced for a good amount of the expenditures for 2022. Followed by the collection services, roads and highways, and administration. But the total projected expenditures for 2022 in the general fund comes in at $11,532,000. So when we look at this, which I know George is not coming through well on, but what I really just wanted to point out was with the general fund, we are projecting a $46,400 surplus in the budget. Which would keep our general fund at a very healthy level. To dive into a little bit of the individual funds we discussed earlier, the sewer fund, the township's contribution to the DOW treatment plant is projected to be about $1 million for 2022, which is a slight increase from 2021. Plus, the Eagle View Treatment Plant are expected to be approximately 340,000. Because of the increased costs and treatment as well as the large costs, you know, that are coming related to the closure of mill and pump station, the food road foresting, and other improvements that are going to be needed at the Eagle View Treatment Plant, we are proposing a $5 rate increase for sewer rates. This would bring our DOW users up to $98 a quarter and our Eagle View users to $100 a quarter. But with that, we are looking at implementing, or we are implementing, a new online customer portal, which will allow users to view their balances, make payments, and receive bills electronically. Which kind of brings the whole process to the 21st century. Like I had hinted with trash collection, this is another area of services that has just continued to rise. We watched it rise as we ran our previous contract, as you may recall from our last meeting. The township's current contract with Eagle Disposal runs out at the end of 2021. We went off the bid earlier this fall and awarded that bid in October of this year to Eagle Disposal. For a three-year contract with potential for two additional one-year extensions. One of the things that we've noted is we've been in a contract for so long, we've kind of been buckered by the rise in trash collection fees. So this was kind of a dramatic increase from our previous contract. Due to that, we're also looking for, proposing to raise the fee for trash and recycling use goal to $95. Looking at the liquid fuels fund, this is the fund that we receive funds through PENDOT for road maintenance. We're expecting, we're expecting $572,300 from PENDOT with an additional $26,000 to the turnback program for a total of $500. But we'll address that. That's, I promise you, is correct in the budget.
Typical sewer dishes.
From the state liquid fuel fund, we are setting aside $50,000 for snow removal, another $200,000 for general roadway maintenance in the township. $250,000 for fund our 2022 road tripping program, and $400,000 will be rolled over from 2021 to 2022. So going to the hydrant fund, I think, I think most residents would be surprised to know that we actually have about 451 $500 in the township. And Aqua, as noted earlier, does charge $25.86 for hydrant. We have typically transferred $90,000 from the water fund to subsidize this or keep this solid. We are proposing to do that again for 2022. We are watching the potential increase in rates from Aqua. There is a potential for a 20% rate increase. We are just keeping that on our radar as we go through with the hydrant fund. The capital improvement fund, staff is recommending a $700,000 transfer from the general fund to help fund the capital improvement fund for next year. This would be something that suggests for 2021. And this would help cover costs of things such as building buildings as well as vehicles for various parts. So in conclusion, I'd like to stress that there's no proposed tax increase for 2022. We are proposing trash recycling fees and sewer fees to increase to cover the ever rising costs associated with that service. Tonight, what we're asking for is the board to give us permission to advertise as well as a preliminary approval of the budget. The formal adoption of the budget will occur on December 14th Board of Supervisors meeting. Once we get permission to advertise, this document will be available on the website, you have that online portal through ClearGov, as well as in a hard copy available in the township lobby. Any questions?
Should we make a motion first and then?
Also move to approve the preliminary budget and the advertising as such for adoption at the December 14th meeting.
Is there any questions first from the board?
No, I think you've done an excellent job on this. I'm somewhat amazed at the computer savvy stuff that goes on here now. You know, when I was here, it was like Daniel Boone walking through the door. But I think you guys have done a terrific job. With the amount of money that we have running through the township and what we're able to complete each year, it's just another testament to how things have gone. And the board, I'm sure, thanks the staff for its excellent work in getting this again to the point where it is.
The second thought.
We know this is a major undertaking. Is there any questions or comments from the others?
I do just want to give a, take a second to thank Sue Bernhardt for her help with this process. Sue has been behind the investment equestria as well as looking at ClearGov, and it's really just transformed the way that we do this process.
Yay, Sue.
I will remove my support.
Okay. So if there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. We'll move to the purchasing and procurement policy.
Sue?
I'll take it. So basically, we've been spending the last 20 minutes talking about revenue and expenditures. And one other thing that, especially with the federal funds that have coming in through Tropical Depression Storm Ida, as well as stimulus funding of 1.9 million, the township receives for that. We wanted just to make sure that we have solid policies in place for our procurement, which we have been following for years, does not have been in writing in an official policy form. And what we're proposing for the board to approve this evening is just that. It lays out, you know, regulations and requirements for individual employees, according to the department heads, department heads according to the township manager, the township manager according to the board of supervisors. And it pretty much follows the guidelines that are set forth in, by the state of Pennsylvania and the state of the province. So it's a lengthier document, but it's basic and solidifying what we already do here at the township and making it a formal filed super stack to follow in future.
Make a motion.
I'm going to adopt the new purchasing and procurement policy.
I'm sorry.
Is there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Move to the resolutions. First, 2021-17, payment of administrative expenses from the pension fund.
So 2021-17 and 2021-18 are pretty much administrative resolutions we pass every year. 17, the payment of administrative expenses from the pension plan, is pretty much authorizing the payment of a number of $2,578.37 to cover the administrative fees that we have blocked related to the police pension.
You're going to want a separate motion on each?
I mean, we could go through each one or we could pass them all together, whatever the board would like.
I'm going to go ahead.
Okay. Well, the next, 2021-18, employee contributions to the police pension fund, this sets the employee contributions to the police pension fund at 3% for 2022. And then finally, our resolution 2021-19, designation of agent for Tropical Depression Ida, this formally points Susan Bernhardt as our agent for this process.
All right. Make a motion.
Second.
Is there any comments or questions? Not all in favor? All right, we'll move to our hearing, the liquor license transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. So this is a liquor license transfer, intermunicipal liquor license transfer for McGurk's Lineville Inc., which is the applicant. And what's going to be considered tonight is the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R18150 from Cafe Gap Inc., located at 43 North Bailey Road, Thorndale Township, Chester County. To property located at 174 Eagle View Boulevard, Hexton, Euclid Township, Chester County. Pursuant to Section 416 of the Pennsylvania liquor code, in this situation, an intermunicipal transfer of a license or issuance of a license for economic development must first be approved by the governing body, this board, of the receiving municipality. Upon request for approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a license, at least one public hearing must be held by the municipal governing body for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality, considering the applicant's intent to transfer the license into the municipality. And that's essentially what we're doing. That's the proceeding we're having here. Just want to go over a couple exhibits that we have for this hearing tonight. Exhibit B1 is an application for approval of the intermunicipal transfer of liquor license. Exhibit B2, or exhibit 2, is the notice of this hearing. Exhibit B3 is proof that the notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Journal News and on the Daily Journal News Online on November 24th, 2021, and November 1st, 2021. Exhibit B5 is a list of the affiliated property owners that were notified in proceedings. And exhibit B5 is the draft resolution that after the hearing, the board's own client can consider as a text. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the app.
Please, William Shew for the app. I have, if I may approach. I know Ms. Tia Donna actually circulated this, but I might want to mark it A1, if that's okay. This is the, this is a little informational packet with a menu attached.
Can I order now?
You know, I tried to do that one time, and I brought food from a client that was doing this, and somebody from the crowd stood up and said, "You're bribing them to get your vote." From then on, they ruined food for everybody. So it wasn't the intent, I can tell you that. We wanted to give everyone a taste. Otherwise, yes, we brought food.
Cool.
That is a little informational packet that I put together for what we're asking for, as Mr. Prey says, a resolution signed by the township allowing us to apply for a liquor license at 174 Eagle View Viewable. We have a, we have the license already in our contract. It's not an economic development license, but our restaurant liquor license. And with that resolution, we can make the application and have a transfer from that municipality into yours. This is, as I'm sure you all know very well, this is, used to be an Apple business. So the premises was previously licensed. We're not asking permission to license a brand new premises. I have statistics on this informational that talk about, other than the location, a little bit of my client's history, the makeup of, you know, we'll also be applying for a Sunday sales permit, that just means we want to open on Sundays and so on. Amusement permit AP, that means occasionally we have light music, somebody playing guitar, something like that, that allows us to do something like that. Capacity, we're looking at about a total, outdoor and indoor, about 180 in this location, which for my client's other operations is rather small, about half the size of what we're used to operating. And the one thing I'd like to point out, and then I will have my client stand up and you can ask him whatever you like about the operation, is his history in handling and managing liquor license settings. In a 20-plus year history, he has one single LCB violation. And in talking to him, it was really a matter of math. So what the LCB does very quickly is they'll send someone in underrated to see if you sell it to them. And the young woman came in, presented a card, bartender read it, and still served her, but the card clearly But the card clearly said she was underage. So it was a matter of math, it wasn't a matter of their protocols, their certifications. I believe they're all ramp certified, responsible alcohol management program. We know how to operate a restaurant. This is not going to be a bar, this is not going to be a wild and crazy bar, this is going to be a restaurant that has liquor sales that complement the food. It's a necessary component in this economy, but it is primarily food sales. We estimate, based on the other locations, about 65-35 split. And with that, I have Mr. John Dawoy. If the board has anybody, any questions, anything about the operation?
How's everybody doing?
All right, real good. They do.
You have a part of your information line.
I need to swear.
He's writing a testimony about the people being the truth, and nothing about the truth. So help his God.
I do.
Part of your own operations, you have in there amusement permit in regards to utilization of guitars, acoustic music, Irish holiday band, et cetera. You're intending to do the same here?
So to have the amusement license gives us the ability to have an acoustic guy on a patio, which is another thing we're going for, is the patio.
Outside?
Or inside, or whatever.
I believe the previous applicant's conditional use decision allowed them to have outdoor entertainment until 10 o'clock.
So 10 o'clock.
Which is consistent with all of our regular hours.
This is just, yes, yeah. This is happy hour, James Taylor type music. And our other places, we have, we'll have an Irish band come in at 2:00.
That's cool, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I'm not saying, hey, no, no, no.
That'll have to be for me, I mean, oh my!
I want to be clear that if we're not opening up a roadhouse, that type of a situation. But it would make sense to apply for the amusement license just for that purpose.
Have you had any contact from any of the other business owners up there surrounding you?
No, I have not.
They haven't said anything at all in regards to any concerns about your operation in any way, shape, or form?
No, no.
Nothing?
No.
The people that bought the center from Brandalini, have you heard anything from them?
I spoke with the new owner a few weeks back, but not in regards to this.
Are you going to be involved in this, like, for instance, the snow removal? Cutting of any grass or any of the common areas or any of that stuff?
So, no, that's part of the common area maintenance.
I understand that, but are you part of the common area maintenance? No? You share an entrance, I know.
No, I do have, I have, I have ten cans, so that has to do with the snow.
He's contributing financially to it, but he's not in charge of the actual contractor.
Well, that's fine, I just want to make sure that there was at least contact made in regards to the joint areas.
Yes, yeah, he does have a pro-rata portion of snow removal, landscape, garbage.
Fine, fine.
But yeah, he doesn't control the actual contractor.
I know in years past, we used to have great concerns about the noise that would be generated off of the patio, but I can't imagine that noise that you would generate would be of such a volume that people within any nearby developments would even hear it, at least I would hope not.
And that would be a liquor violation if they did.
Very good.
He's prevented by the liquor department.
Very fine. Okay.
I don't have a question.
I look forward to eating on one of those sandwiches, which is so advertised with the new roads. I got to taste it. I still say that the best cheese steak that I've ever had was from V and S up in Redding.
How about that?
Not the ones in Philadelphia, the one up in Redding. Have you ever seen V and S?
This is going to be.
So are there any other board questions?
No, that's all for me.
How about the public? Are there any questions or comments from the public?
It would be of occurrence, right?
Yes.
Modern restaurant.
All right, then with that, we'll close the hearing, close the record. If the board is so inclined, it may grant a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R18150 from Cafe Gap, located at 43 North Bailey Road, Thorndale Township, to the property located at 174 Eagleview Boulevard, Exton, Utland Township, which is included in the exhibit as exhibit B5.
So moved.
A second.
Is there any comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Next is the Hanking Group's petition to vacate and rededicate Constitution Drive.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So this is a part of the development that's known as Eagleview Town Center 2, and the applicant is the Hanking Group. It relates specifically to Constitution Drive. Hanking Group plans to build a second phase of the Eagleview Town Center, which will include 13 residential buildings with 364 apartments and a 40,000-plus square foot office building. The board granted a conditional use approval for the town sound, subject to certain conditions, including that the Hanking Group complete the necessary documents for vacating the public portion of Constitution Drive that becomes private. The board also approved the preliminary final land development plan and application, again, subject to the same conditions that portion of Constitution Drive be vacated and rededicated. Hanking knows all the real estate abutting portion of Constitution Drive to be vacated, with the exception of parcel 33-1-39.1, which is also known as Block 54, which is owned by the Chester County Economic Development Foundation, and which Hanking has represented and warranted that the Chester County Economic Development Foundation consented to the action. The Hanking Group requests that the board approve an ordinance that provides that the portion of Constitution Drive, as depicted in the right-of-way vacation and dedication exhibit prepared by Chester Valley Engineers, dated August 31st, 2021, be approved and that the portion depicted as dedicated to the town to be accepted and opened. So just briefly, we do have a couple exhibits, few exhibits. Board exhibit one is the Hanking Group's amended petition to vacate and rededicate certain portion of Constitution Drive. Exhibit B2 is proof of advertising, and there were actually two items that were advertised in the Daily Local and online. First is a petition to vacate and rededicate, which was advertised on October 24th and November 1st, and then also the proposed ordinance, the hearing on the proposed ordinance that we're doing tonight as well, which was advertised on October 29th. Exhibit B3 is the notice and a list of all property owners abutting Constitution Drive, and B4 is a proposed ordinance to vacate Constitution Drive. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Nathan Ferris, and I'm with Ballard &amp; Spar. And I'm here tonight representing the Hanking Group on our petition to vacate and rededicate Constitution Drive. I know you guys are familiar with this development of Eagleview and this next phase, so I'm going to keep my comments very brief. I also have with me here tonight Mr. Neil Fisher, who is Hanking's vice president of development, which you all know very well. Just a brief issue, Mr. Free touched on most of these points, so I'll go there quickly. The space of the Eagleview 2 Town Center that we're here about tonight is going to include 13 residential buildings with about 360 apartments, including 40,000 square foot office building. And you guys are familiar with this project because you've already had it before you twice, once in December 2020 for conditional use, and then again in September 2021 for final land development approval. And both those approvals included a condition that Hanking vacate and rededicate a portion of Constitutional Drive during the Coliseum Bowl, all closer down to Eagleview Boulevard. And that's exactly what was shown on the plans that the board has already approved. So that's why we're here again tonight, is to get final approval for that. So even though we've already approved this plan, it's a condition that we do vacation and that requires the ordinance understanding that statute. And as Mr. Free pointed out, there's only two abutting property owners, Hanking and the Chester County Economic Development Foundation, who's been working closely with us, and is actually executing a deed for dedication, which will be able to do it if there is an ordinance passed. So we wanted to thank them for their cooperation, as well as the township staff, who's been very helpful in making this process safe. With that, Mr. Fisher, I have your questions.
Is there any more questions?
I don't have any questions.
Any public questions, comments? Okay, well, with that, we will.
So moved on to your.
Well, hold on a second. Close the hearing, close the record. The board is so inclined, it can approve the ordinance that provides that the portion of Constitution Drive, as depicted on the right-of-way vacation and dedication exhibit, prepared by Chester Valley Engineers, dated August 31st, 2021, be vacated and the portion depicted as dedicated to the township be accepted and opened.
Now, so moved.
A second.
Any comments? Not all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, Neil, when you had your glasses up above on your head earlier tonight, I swear you're actually using some more.
You know, that's how you know that your eyesight is really going, you're just moving your glasses up.
Oh, I thought it was just your age. 50.
I think the age is also in the air, the combination of the eyes.
I hear you, I hear you.
Good night.
Good night.
Last item on the agenda is the request for extension for the Gray's Fund.
Yes, so the applicant was actually at the planning commission meeting last week providing update. He had submitted their radiation plan as requested to be vacated. DDP has responded with a few comments, and they have 90 days to respond to DDP's letter. So in return, I received the request for the extension from Allison Zarro, who began the applicant requesting the extension until February 15th, 2025.
Any more questions on the extension?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, any comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Move to the announcements. So all meetings will be held at the township building, unless otherwise noted. On November 11th, the historical commission meets at 7:30 at the Cadwalader House. On November 17th, the environmental advisory council meets at 6:30 PM. We just note that the township offices are closed on Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. On December 1st, the planning commission meets at 7:30 PM. And on December 13th, the board of supervisors meets at 7:30 PM. With that, we'll open it up to other comments or questions.
Just real quick, I'd like to note that I think in my bachelor presentation, I said the board meeting was the 14th of December, so it's the 13th, I just want to make that correction.
And I would ask if you do have a question, if you can come to the microphone and say your name.
Hi, my name is Brigger, I live on Woodwell Farms. I've just been a little bit concerned by the rising wave of crimes against women. And when I went on the township website, I didn't find resources to become domestic violence center, foreign resources to help global law's PCA. And since this township has been collecting my income tax since I'm a parent, I'd like to see a little bit better, especially when it comes to crimes against women that really become my part, that we're not doing enough, and that we haven't had any scheduled community programming. And I would really like to see that be considered in the future. I just graduated college on college campuses to get the pedal around the world to talk about sexual assault prevention. And especially if we see crime rise in Utland, and some of those crimes be sexual assault over Russian sex and community education, and I don't think that's too much to explore. So I think it's a good way to make a committee about women's issues in this township and have some public community education about sexual assault and that's the line.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
My name's Timmy Casey, I live in 807 North Wicker, Exton. I have two questions, one follow-up question. I was here in September, at the September meeting, and I had asked a question with regards to having the township have developers provide a 3D rendering of what their development will actually look like when it's complete. I just wanted to see if we have a date on acquisitions as a date, if there's been any discussion on moving forward with that, so we know exactly what the development's going to look like. Because right now, what we have is a 2D piece of paper. It's hard to tell what the development's going to look like when it's completed.
I can't provide a timeline as to when that will be enacted, but it certainly looks something we've been discussing since that meeting.
The other question I have is with regards to 804 North Wicker, the Hanking Development. And there's a crane there that's about six stories high, that's lifting probably, I calculated the weight of the pieces of concrete, they're probably close to 10 tons. And I just wanted to see what oversight the township has on that crane, to make sure that it's safe, there should be no issues. And we hear a lot of stories about cranes falling, and there's a lot of weight there of cranes, that it's at least five or six stories tall. And who within the township, you know, oversees that property so that it's safe? I'm sure they have come to the township to get approval to make sure that it was safe, there could be no issues, the foundation is correct on the crane, or they just come in and do what they do and leave, and what would happen?
Now, we know that that's not true.
Well, I'm just.
Lee, you're the only one here from the building partner tonight, and I wish, Hannah, you would have asked that question while Mr. Fisher was in attendance, because he would have been able to give you the actual down-to-earth, you know, statement as to exactly who, but I know from in the past, there was always a separate agency hired that looked at everything that they built, from the top of the building to the bottom of the building. And you can jump in here anywhere, Lee or Tara, and say so, but I know that there's usually, with any kind of a Hanking development, an extra step that they take in regards to the hiring of a separate, independent firm to look at what they're building from day one on, let alone what we do with our own engineering firms as well. And I know in the past that if we had any kind of concerns in regards to the type of construction that was being done that hadn't been handled here previously, we would also get outside people to look at it as well, to make sure that it was all being done properly. There's any number of agencies that are involved. There's also the county involved and the conservation district, making sure that all the things are being done as far as that end of things are concerned. are being done as far as that end of things are concerned. Every once in a while, we'll also see the people from the state. You also at times see people from OSHA. So, you see all, all different agencies coming in at different times, looking at things of that nature. I can't sit here and give you the specific firm. I think Neil would have been able to tell you that, but I can tell you that there's any number of people that are involved in looking at that, Henry.
So, can we put it on pause until the adjutant's in?
Can we put what on?
That makes it a crime.
Can we put the crane on pause? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, construction on pause.
Under what basis would we do that?
Safety.
How can you stand there and tell me that you have a concern on the safety? Do you have something specific that you complain to?
Well, I don't.
I don't? So, how can I give an order that that would be stopped?
Well, you don't have any documentation that it's a safe site, and yet it's down to.
Nor do you.
I don't.
But I think we do when we issue permits, and you get permits from the state, you get permits from all these other agencies that come forward, Henry.
I'm just asking you if we.
Well, you're getting a no from me in regards to the pause of any kind of construction on that site.
And do we have the safety concerns addressed? That's all I'm asking.
I am certain that they probably are. Am I right or am I wrong?
Are you saying we had our inspectors out there, we've had the township engineers out there, if there was any concerns, maybe, that we have.
That's all I wanted to know. Because if that crane falls, I mean, this, it could hit Route one thirteen, it could hit, you know, neighboring properties. But absolutely, they're there. Thank you, and Doug, I don't know why you have to act like that, just.
Henry, a couple months ago, you stood here in this room, and you referred to us as failures.
No, I didn't.
That's, yes, you did. It's actually on the record and on tape.
I didn't, I didn't.
So, when you, when you stand here in front of me, that's what runs through my mind, plain and simple. Forty years I've put in here.
I'm not saying you didn't, I just asked a question, and I don't know why you have to treat people like that.
Ah.
Thank you.
Other comments? If not, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night. Oh, that's right, we have finished.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation of the conditional use hearing related to the Dunkin' Donuts at eighty East Uglan Avenue with the applicant Ron and Verso. I'm going to turn it over. We have, at the last meeting, had paused the hearing to be continued tonight, so I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Gina Gerber, again here on behalf of the applicant, Chris Vesters. I'm joined also by Ron and Verso, along with his broker here this evening, and our engineer is available virtually on the meeting platform. He should be logging in here shortly. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to join us in person this evening. We are not intending on presenting any additional evidence for documentation this evening. The board had presented a condition that we were to take a look at with regard to a potential pedestrian connectivity between the bus stop that's in front of the property on Uglan Avenue and this particular building. We understand that that, this is what the board wants to see. We have gone back to the tenant to discuss that condition with them. Unfortunately, the tenant is not agreeable to taking on that condition, and talked to the applicant excessively about this. I think we have a proposal that the board be willing to entertain and approve and build throughout the year. We think that the suggestion of the pedestrian connectivity is a real issue, we take that serious over. Since we are not doing any particular land development with this application, what we would like to propose to the board as a consideration of the conditions is to put that pedestrian connectivity in at the time in which Mr. Verso engaged in land development to expand the parking on the neighboring shopping center parcel. That would be inclusive of getting the necessary approvals for doing so, which we understand is going to require EndUp approval, and if we are able to get those approvals at that time, that the pedestrian improvements would be explored holistically with the shopping center as well as the Dunkin' parcel, to make sure that we're connecting all of those parcels in one fell swoop. If the board is agreeable to that, obviously, we'd love to have a discussion if there's anything more that you'd love to see at that time, but the applicant does not have a specific timeline as to when that land development will start. He is committed to doing it, but in light of the economy that we're dealing with right now, any number of approvals is going to be required in order to make that happen, we're, we're struggling with being able to make an accurate timeline. So, if the board is willing to grant us the flexibility to explore that in the future, we are absolutely willing to undertake that as part of that land development approval. And honestly, I think what we're going to end up with, if we do that during land development, is going to be a lot more inclusive for all of those parcels. We're going to end up with a much better result if we review this piece meal and do it now.
Is the applicant prepared to use best efforts in order to accomplish that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Our plan would be to contact EndUp early on in the land development process to try and get the necessary approvals, so that we know exactly what EndUp will be willing to approve, and work with them during the land development approval with the township, to make sure that that connectivity is going through all parties, third parties, municipality, and the elements.
Sorry, do you have any objections or concerns?
No, I think that's a much better option in order to include those parcels, make the connectivity much better overall.
Any other comments, any questions?
So, is there any, any other board comment or questions?
No, don't think so.
Are there any public comments or questions? All right, well, with that, then, we will now close the record, close the hearing. If, if the board is so inclined tonight, it does not have to make a decision tonight, it has forty-five days to prepare a written decision, regardless of whether you approve a motion tonight or not, but the board could approve a conditional use application for Dunkin' Donuts at eighty East Uglan Avenue, Exton, conditioned on compliance with the two E.B. Ross letters dated October fourth, twenty-twenty-one, and February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, and compliant with such other conditions, as the board of supervisors and this township staff may include in the decision of approval, including the connectivity that was discussed.
I'm going to do it so moved.
Oh, I'm going to do a second.
All right, any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.
I would only ask you one thing.
Yes, sir.
There is a tenant that you have in the center.
Yes.
Who has been putting up signs on Route one thirteen, advertising items that he has for sale in his shop. Do you know who I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I've had the displeasure of having to take those down twice now. I don't want to take them to third.
No, he's a good guy, he'll take care of it.
Very good, thank you, Ron. Appreciate it.
He probably, he probably knows what he's not allowed to do. So, here, let me just, for the, for the record, just a couple closing comments. The board of supervisors has forty-five days to prepare a written decision. The written decision may contain additional conditions as noted earlier. The written decision will be mailed to you, or more likely, discussed and presented at a future meeting. You may be filed with the board of commissioners of Chester County with a thirty-day written decision. If no, you must file the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hallelujah.